Okay, it is 9:53 on March 10th. We are back from executive session. No action is taken. We are going to go to, let's see. Item number six, discussion and possible action on an appointment of one person to the Crime Control Prevention District. Mr. Isbrand.
Mr. Mayor, given the resignation that we've received and the vacancy that's open, I would move the appointment of James Jones to the Crime Control Prevention District. Mr. Jones is a resident of Castle Hills who lives on Town View, who has 35 years of service with the San Antonio Police Department. Entered the police academy in 1983, has worked in patrol, vice, repeat offender, sex crimes, special victims unit, and internal affairs. He was a detective for 18 years until his promotion to sergeant, then was assigned to Internal Affairs where he spent his last nine years of service before retiring in 2018 and again as a resident here in Castle Hills.
Yes. So we have a motion on the table?
If it requires a second, I'll second it.
We have a second. We have a discussion until then? Mr. Jones is here. Maybe in a second. Let me see where we go. Okay, Ms. Winger, we moved on to item number six. On the CCPD appointment, we have an appointment by Mr. Isbrand and a second by Mr. May for Mr. Jones. Does council have any other discussion? Mr. Gregory?
What are we on?
Six.
Oh, six.
Mr. Sanderson?
Oh, this is actually my appointment because the person who I appointed, Elizabeth Gonzalez, didn't care to serve. And so I would like to appoint Kevin Knippa in her place.
Can we get confirmation that they're per person? Got you, Mr. Knippa, thank you. We have a motion on the table, so Mr. Schnell, how do we go with that?
I think you have to dispose of Mr. Isbrand's motion one way or the other. And then Ms. Winger, if that motion is defeated, Ms. Winger can make her motion.
Okay.
I don't, I don't think the CP, CCPD had, I don't think the city had agreed to appoint the CCPD members by council member. If that was the case, then it would be different. But I don't believe the council has done that in regard to CCPD. I'll ask Mr. Rappley if he can respond on that.
Okay. Well, we have a motion on the table. All in favor of Mr. Jones?
I'm sorry, what do we vote?
So we have a motion on the table right now? And Mr. Schnell just said that we have to take care of this motion, so we're voting on the motion.
If we find out that each individual member appoints somebody to the Crime Control District, which I thought that's how it was.
It was.
What happens to this vote?
Mr. Schnell?
If there's some question about whether that's the process, then I don't think that anyone should do anything tonight in regard to this appointment till we get an answer on that. The local government code in the chapter on CCPDs has a provision that talks to this methodology of appointments to a CCPD. But it's unclear to me whether that was the policy, whether that procedure has been adopted by the council in regard to the appointments to this Crime Control Prevention District. If it has been formally determined by resolution or ordinance that the procedure to appoint members to CCPD is that each member of the governing body makes an appointment, then Ms. Winger would be able to make this appointment. If there is no such resolution or ordinance, then Mr. Isbrand's motion is in order and needs to be disposed of. If it is not clear historically what the procedure is, then it would be my recommendation that rather than have someone be appointed tonight and have to have that appointment reversed in the future, means that it would be more prudent to simply not take any action tonight until this is resolved. And I don't know the history on how appointments to CCPD have been made or whether the city formally by resolution or ordinance adopted the procedure permitted under the CCPD chapter in the local government code as to appointments.
The only thing I remember is in the past I have nominated people individually and I thought other council members did too.
That was the practice.
I might be flawed, but that's, that's my memory. And I see nothing wrong with it.
It was the practice is what it was.
And I would prefer that we find out exactly what it is rather than telling somebody, you're on, no, you're not.
I agree. Mr. Rappley?
I was gonna say, Mayor, the last time we nominated or approved someone was Ms. Martin a couple of months ago. And that just came from nominations from the governing body, not by place.
No, one person nominated her, that's what happened. Just like the, like the rest of them.
Okay, well, in the interest of doing it once and doing it right.
Yeah, fine.
I would like to get this postponed. Mr. Isbrand, were you willing to retract your motion and possibly amend that to?
Mayor, real quick, Captain, do you remember how this is done in the past to achieve?
I didn't hear his motion. What was it?
Mr. Rappley?
Yeah, Mayor, the statute I'm referring to is section 363.101.5, which says that the governing body of a municipality by resolution may appoint the governing body's membership as the board of directors of the district. That didn't happen here. Then it says, in a district for which the board is not appointed under that subsection, the governing body may appoint one director, each, each member of the governing body may appoint one director to the board subject to confirmation by the governing body. But there's other sections which say that, that the methodology has to be done by resolution. So I think we just need to know exactly what historically this city council has done in regard to appointments to this board to determine whether it is an appointment with each member of the governing body appointing one director, subject to confirmation by the entire governing body, or whether any one member of the governing body can make any number of appointments subject to confirmation.
Thank you, Mr. Schnell. So we were kind of stuck in limbo here. We have a motion on the table.
So moved.
We already have a motion and a second, Ms. Winger.
He just made a motion at table.
We made a motion. I thought we had a motion.
He said he was asking for a motion.
No, I said we have a motion on the table and a second. Mr. Rappley, yes? So, Mr. Schnell, where does this leave us now?
Well, it, Mr. Isbrand's motion can be acted upon tonight. And if it turns out that the procedure was the procedure that the, the city had, had previously adopted was not followed, then unfortunately, if Mr. Jones were appointed tonight and it turned out that the process for appointment was each governing member of the governing body could appoint, then we would probably have to terminate Mr. Jones's service on the CCPD to allow Ms. Winger to make her appoint, make her nomination of an appointee, which would be subject to confirmation by the governing body. So you would ask Mr. Isbrand about withdrawing his nomination. If he declines to do so, then I think you have a motion that needs to be voted on.
Mr. Isbrand?
So I, I don't understand how this is different than Ms. Martin being nominated and approved by the council last time we had a vacancy take place here. But in the interest of doing this right, and with apologies to Mr. Jones for sitting with us all night while we got to the point where we discovered that the city doesn't know what it's doing, I'll withdraw the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand. Mr. Mayor, are you okay with drawing your second?
That is correct. I'll withdraw it.
Can we get a motion to postpone till April?
Can I make a motion to table?
Postpone?
Or postpone, what, I think.
Perfect, till April?
Sounds good, April.
Thank you so much. And can we get a second? Second, thank you. I don't think we need any more discussion. All in favor? Unanimous, thank you, council. Mr. Rappley? Mr. Rappley, do we still need the department heads here? Okay, thank you so much. Unless y'all want to hang out for fun. Item number seven, discussion and possible action on an appointment to the Board of Adjustment. Ms. Winger?
Yes, and then this is, is my appointment because I had appointed Pam Grunwald, who had to resign for personal reasons. And so I would like to appoint Bill Pyatt, who is a former dean of law at St. Mary's University and current professor of law at St. Mary's University. And he is accepted.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Mayor, point of order, I don't, I guess I'm not understanding what the difference is here of an appointment versus a vote on these things. If this is Ms. Winger's appointment, doesn't she have the right to make the appointment? Why does council have to vote on it?
We don't.
Because that's just what you were saying about the other one.
Correct, because we voted not to do that.
I'm confused what the process is here.
Yes, you're correct.
So the second was unnecessary then?
Oh, okay. I thought it was a movement.
Okay. Well, then, Mr. Pyatt's appointed, and we will proceed to item number eight. Discussion and possible action on removal of Todd Herman as a member of the zoning commission due to his missing three consecutive meetings.
I'd like to go ahead and pull this item because I was incorrect in interpreting the rule here. There was no non, there was not a, not a consecutive number of absences. And so I was incorrect in my interpretation. So I know I'm only supposed to pull one item at a time, but I believe that I'd like to go and pull number eight. And if that is permitted, then I'd like to go ahead and move on to the next item.
It's your item, you can pull it. We'll proceed to item number nine. Discussion and possible action on an appointment of a new member of the zoning commission if a vacancy was created by the removal of Todd Herman.
And I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to go and pull this item because of my, my misinterpretation of this particular rule.
Thank you, Mr. Sanderson. Discussion and possible action on selection of a financial advisor. Mr. Rappley?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. The city received seven proposals for a financial advise, excuse me, financial advisor. We had published this on the website. The notice was in the paper and we put on TML. After receiving the seven proposals, the evaluation team consisted of Councilman Gregory, myself, and Ms. Fegans. We scored and ranked through the qualifying categories, which are outlined in the RFQ. And then we actually took the seven down to three because they were actually pretty close on their experience and what they could provide for the city. And we score and ranked the top three, and it came down to particularly SAMCO financial advisors. From my standpoint in reviewing their qualifications, from my standpoint, it came down to extensive experience with, with multi-year CIP programs, development of bond programs, structuring finance plans, an array of financing experience. Through either doing general obligation bonds or certificate of obligations. And I was impressed with their debt restructuring and financing. They have two local bankers that'll be assigned to Castle Hills. I was impressed with their quantitative capabilities, which would help us develop the financing plan required for addressing the needs to borrow for our streets and drainage needs moving forward. They provided a comprehensive scope of service in relation to debt scenarios, even looking at how they tried to reduce the tax rate impact through analysis and debt financing options. They also assist other cities here locally, even Converse, Soma, Shirts, and New Braunfels. And I have a copy of the scoring and ranking sheet of all of them if council would like. If you're, I'm open to questions if you have it. We have a representative here from SAMCO. And the idea with this agenda item is to select the financial advisor and then in April come back with a contract moving forward with them.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Council, do we have any motions?
And, Mayor, I have, what's, Mr., sorry?
I move that we accept SAMCO Capital as the selection of our financial advisor for the city.
Thank you, Mr. Gregory.
Mayor, I have Andrew Freeman from SAMCO, who can discuss a little bit about their firm, their experiences, and how they can help Castle Hills moving forward. But again, at the end of the day, they'll be back next month once we put together a contract.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. So we have a motion on the table, or a motion on Mr. Gregory?
I'll second that motion.
Second on Mr. May. Do we have any discussion? Ms. Winger?
So if we approve this, what is the cost to the city?
From a cost standpoint?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, I had my sheet, but go ahead, sir. Sorry.
Zero dollars. We work on a contingent fee basis. We get paid upon the successful completion and delivery of funds from a bond, CO, tax note sale, et cetera. Not akin to lawyers where we charge by the hour. It's all part of an ultimate transaction, whether it happens tomorrow or 10 years from now.
Well, okay, but if, if indeed the city were to approve a bond, then it wouldn't be zero because we would be paying the interest plus a fee to you.
Yes, we do charge a fee, just as all the other consultants, bond rating agencies, et cetera. It's a contract we submitted as part of the RFP process. It's on a sliding scale. The more debt you issue, the more our rate comes down. And I'm sure that the-
But when we discussed this initially, one of the points that was made is that it wouldn't necessarily be a bond. It could be that you would simply find other sources of financing that would not involve cost to the city. Is that what we're talking about or not?
Are you speaking in terms of grant monies that are available?
I'm just asking because that was one of the things that had been put up because this city has never been particularly interested in a bond.
Sure, I understand that. My experience has taught me that the city has two avenues, or potentially three avenues to secure funding. The first of which is going into debt, whether that's a bond, certificate of obligation, revenue bond, et cetera. The second would be grants available.
Can you move that mic a little bit because I'm having trouble, yeah?
The second would be grants that would, a grant writer, which is a completely different consultant, would go and try to source for the city. Given your economic situation, I doubt that there's a ton of grant monies available for the city of Castle Hills. And the third would be collecting enough and building a stockpile of cash to pay for projects on a pay-go basis, which is particularly difficult for cities to do, given that you have to set a tax rate at a level to meet your operating expenditures and no more. So however you all go about to determine the best method to finance your, your capital improvement plans is certainly at your discretion and ultimately for you as a council, we certainly help. And then by and large, that is by taking out debt from time to time to fund those capital improvement projects.
But at this point, we're not making a decision one way or another.
No, ma'am, you're not.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Counsel, no further. We have a motion, Mr. Gregory. Do we have a second by Mr. May? Any further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous, thank you, council. Let's see here. Item number 11, discussion of possible action on resolution number 2020-03-10. We're appealing the current investment policy and adopting a new investment policy for the city of Castle Hills.
Mr. Mayor?
Mayor?
I propose that we adopt resolution number 2020-03-10 as stated.
Thank you, Mr. May.
Second?
Second by Mr. Isbrand. Mr. Rappley, would you like to provide any background real quick?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. As you, as indicated in our AgendaCom the last time that a investment policy was adopted for 2000, it was in 2016, this investment policy has been reviewed by Ms. Fegans, compatible with other cities. It's been reviewed and evaluated by Councilman Gregory as the treasurer for the council. It has the process of going through and repealing what was existing investment policy and doing things that are included to conform to the Public Investment Act so that we can have a new investment policy in place. Some of the highlights, I defer to Ms. Fegans or Councilman Gregory on this because they work pretty hard on this one.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Do we have any discussion with council? Mr. Gregory?
This is a substantial upgrade and takes into all the accounts applicable laws. I was at a meeting December a year ago for finance people of the city, and it incorporates a lot of the new things that have come in. Hardly recommended. It's a healthy thing for the city to have this. And you have probably the most up-to-date you can have right now.
Mr. Sanderson?
It's all unclear about when the previous policy was implemented. Was that in 2016? Did I hear that correctly? And how, contrast and compare, maybe perhaps talk in generalities that a mayor software engineer might be able to understand as far as why this is different, why this is recommended. Just a little bit of the, you know, perhaps the chat on some highlights. That'd be, that'd be nice to know.
Mr. Gregory?
The old policy I left at home. But there's a far more in-depth discussion almost under every single headline on what can be done, how to do it. There was, you had the base, you had the basic thing the last time. But training requirements, I know that's one thing that was expanded significantly. Now, internal controls, definitely internal controls are updated as they were from 2016. That's very important. Ethics is about the same. Investments have changed. What we can do under that sixth, number two, investments can change what is authorized and what is unauthorized. I was surprised at that, but they have. Maximum maturities, we sat down in light of what the city is doing right now and its investment needs. We had the authority to change around the different investment maturities that we had then versus what we have now. See if there's anything else. Diversification surprised me too, but it is more up-to-date in accordance with the current code.
And the government code is not ours. The government code is the state's.
I understand that.
Am I masking the question, correct?
I beg pardon?
In other words, what we have to read is simply the draft. The government code, we don't change because that's the state government.
That is correct.
Okay, got it.
And there are just some of the highlights of a few of the things that differentiated between this and the previous investment policy of 16.
Okay.
Counsel, no further questions? All in favor? Unanimous, thank you, council. Item number 12, public hearing on the amendment to section 50-590 of chapter 50 of the Code of Ordinances to revise the method of appointment of members and alternates to the zoning commission, establishing rules and operating procedures for the zoning commission and setting an effective date. It's 10:16. We're going to open the public hearing. It's 10:17. We're going to close the public hearing. Proceed, item number 13, discussion of possible action on a recommendation from the zoning commission to city council on ordinance 2020-03-10 to amend section 50-590 of chapter 50 of the Code of Ordinances to revise the method of appointment of members and alternates to the zoning commission, establishing rules and operating procedures for the zoning commission and setting an effective date.
Mayor, Ms. Baker is here to represent the zoning commission. If you have any questions. And Mr. Schnell is here to ask any, to respond to any questions you might have as well.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Thank you, Ms. Baker, for sticking it out with us. Mr. Isbrand?
Ms. Baker, a pleasure. Could you tell us in this recommendation why the zoning commission is recommending increasing its size to seven commissioners from the current five?
The zoning board didn't really consider the size so much as how the list of prospective applicants would be considered. And in keeping with the reasoning why the ordinance suggestion was presented was is that it felt, whoever proposed it felt that some people were disenfranchised on the council, including the mayor, at various stages and throughout different councils. Somebody was going to be disenfranchised. But by only making the mayor able to comprise the list of applicants, in our opinion, it did the same thing. So we changed the language that said only the mayor was, was to create the applicant list to the council was to create the council, the applicant list. In hindsight, though, I think that having a seven-member commission would be very difficult to manage. We're already having issues keeping a full quorum with regular members. So multiple alternates have had to serve for a number of months. And so I think seven is unwieldy, especially if we're expecting to have a quorum. And then if we're going to have seven, then I guess my preference would be is that we make it mandatory to some degree that the alternates must appear at all the hearings if there is an applicant involved. So that they have continuity if there's a hearing that goes on more than one, one time. And it would be beneficial if they would come anyway so that they have continuity. We had all kinds of things with the new ordinances on short-term rentals and home occupations that if you only came once, you missed a ton of things that were presented and rationales and discussions from citizens. So those were my personal comments that are not contained within what the zoning commission discussed. But in hindsight, those are the things that I've seen. And I think perhaps council might like to consider that.
I, I don't know if you're, I'm not asking you to read anyone's mind here, but I'm curious if you are aware if the zoning commission members in considering this were aware of the recent changes that the council made in the selection of board of adjustment members and architectural review committee members and the consistency of that.
Yes, well, I can't speak for everyone else. I was aware of it, and so part of the reason I was in favor of voting for it was I believed it was what you desired for consistency. I don't know if the other commissions have difficulty with quorums and the regular members appearing or if they have enough substitutes that show up on a regular basis. So I can only speak for what I witnessed with zoning.
And just one other question, if I might. The verbiage in this recommendation is, and I quote, "Submit a slate of potential candidates to the city council for consideration," which I think has the potential to conote something here. Was it, was that the intention of the zoning commission in suggesting that there be a slate of candidates?
That was not my language. I suspect that either the city attorney or the city manager may have crafted that. Our intent was that the, the list of applicants would be created from, I guess, a compilation of names from council. That's the way I, that's the way I remember proposing it.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Winger?
Yeah, I, I find it interesting that you say that this was brought forward by either the city manager, the city attorney, because this is not what we voted to send to the zoning commission. That being the case, I think I'd like to refer this back to the zoning commission to consider what the council actually sent, which was basically what Mr. Isbrand is referencing. And that was that we were simply going to ask the zoning commission to consider having the same method of appointment for the zoning commission that we did for the board of adjustment and architectural review, and not to change it. So, you know, if that, suddenly you seem to have been brought something that you just thought we had sent, but that's not what we sent.
That was the way I perceived it. I cannot speak for everyone on council.
Okay, so I think we need to send this back to zoning to re-review.
If that was a motion, I'd like to go ahead and second that.
So moved.
So we have a motion and a second. Mr. May, did you have a comment?
I agree. I'd like to vote.
Okay. Motion, second?
May I just say, thank you, Ms. Baker, for representing the commission tonight. I appreciate that.
I'm here for the next one, too.
Thank you so much. All in favor?
Well, wait a minute.
Oh, Mr. Gregory?
While we're here, we could clear a lot of, clean a lot of this up. We can- We can take it over to another night if you want, but, uh, there are changes that can be made tonight to clean this up. It's just up to the council whether you want to wait another month or... I and others have worked extensively on how to change this. And, uh, if the council would rather just delay it another month and not, uh, look at any potential changes, which may not require another eye on this, it's up to the council.
I, I personally would like to see zoning review it only because Ms. Baker brought up a good point as far as the seven-person committee. I feel like looking at the seating up here, that might just be difficult logistically, aside from having to get people that want to be here and will show up and are, you know, relatively subject matter experts and can provide some value. That's my opinion. That being said, everybody's spoken their piece. We'll call for the vote. All in favor?
What do you want to do?
That's tough. Because I'm, I'm intrigued what Mr. Gregory's language is. I wonder...
The problem is that if, I, I agree that that would be very-
Ms. Winger, can you use your microphone?
I agree that that would be very simple. The, the thing is that if, if they had simply been presented with what we asked them to be presented with, we wouldn't have the problem. So the question now is, how do we sit here and clean it up? When all we asked them to do was, was what, I think it was your motion, was to consider, um, that we simply have the same method of appointment for them. And I don't know how we do that, because this whole thing is written as an ordinance. We have to have a new ordinance. So if you want to not do that and not send it back to zoning, which I'm not sure if we could do that or not, but if we can, then we simply need to craft an ordinance that says basically, and we can take that up in April.
Yeah, and, and I get, excuse me, I'm sorry. That's a, that's a good point, because this is an ordinance that is being written here. It's not just a policy we're writing on how it's, and so I'm, I'm, I'm ready to vote. Thank you.
So do you, do you want to send it back to zoning? Or do you simply want them to bring back the, the same ordinance as applied to zoning that we had for the other one?
I'm, I'm ready to act on your motion. Thank you.
We, we have a motion on the table, first and a second. All in favor?
Send it back to zoning.
All opposed? Okay. Uh, passes four to one. Okay. Uh, let's see here. Item number 14, unless anybody corrects me, public hearing on the amendment to section 50-497 of chapter 50 of the Code of Ordinances. We're going to open the public hearing at 10:26. Ms. Baker, I'm assuming that you don't want to speak on the public hearing? Okay. Uh, we'll close the public hearing at 10:26 and proceed to item number 15. Discussion of possible action on the recommendation from the zoning commission to city council on ordinance 2020-03-10-A to amend section 50-497 of the chapter 50 of the Code of Ordinances. Executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code, if necessary. Mr. Snoll?
Um, Mayor, I'm, I'm not sure there's a need for an executive session on this item. I think we should let the, let Ms. Baker make whatever presentation she wants. I will, uh, try and supplement what she, uh, says and then, uh, respond to, uh, America, questions from members of the governing body. And, uh, I think we can proceed that way. And if it does appear to either a member of the governing body or to Mr. Fletcher or me that an executive session would be appropriate, we will speak up.
Thank you, Mr. Snoll. Baker?
Yes, sir. Counsel, um, on section 50, 497, the recommendation to change the Code of Ordinances, um, all I can say is that the zoning commission went into executive session. We came out of executive session. We took a vote, and it was a unanimous vote to change the recommenda- recommended ordinance. That's all that happened.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Baker. Uh, Mr. Gregory?
Who brought the recommended changes?
I don't believe that was on there. I think when I asked the question, Mr. Snoll indicated that, uh, the attorney representing the city.
So it's your impression that what we have here reflects the mindset of the attorney representing the city?
Yes, sir.
But not the zoning commission?
No, we, we voted unanimously to, um, alter the code, change the code.
Um, if I may, the, the vote by the zoning commission was a four to zero to one vote. Mr. Rodriguez did abstain, but Ms. Baker is correct. That essentially is a unanimous vote. Um, this, this, um, this, uh, ordinance came about based on a recommendation from Mr. Denton's office that, um, the city should act to amend section 50-497 to remove a facial, on its face, um, inconsistency of section 50-497 as it reads today with the Federal Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act of 2000. And that is why the, um, that is the, the gist of what the zoning commission was advised, um, both by me and by Mr. Denton. And the zoning commission did act to recommend to the, um, to the council that the, uh, text of section 50-497 be revised as set out in the, uh, ordinance that's before you this evening. I, I did understand that there was a question, um, about, um, one other thing in this ordinance that a member of the governing body wanted to ask about or, or was concerned about. And so I, you know, if there is still a concern about anything in this ordinance, be glad to try and respond to it and, uh, make a recommendation as to what you all might do this evening. If you're comfortable with the change, which is basically, the change is to remove from, um, section 1B, um, one provision. Section 1B, as it reads today, says, "All districts except A districts, in any district except A, the following uses may be requested for designation as, as special uses." It's on the second page of the proposed ordinance. Subpart B. Agenda item 15.
The subpart B, uh, currently have more than these two right here.
Right.
So you're going to go ahead and tell us which ones that were deleted.
It has a, it has a third, it has a third provision. It, the provision in numerical order, one is general care hospitals. Two, the current ordinance says religious and philanthropic institutions. And item three says nursing homes. So the change in this ordinance is simply to remove that prohibition from the ordinance so that religious and philanthropic institutions are treated on equal terms with other similar uses. And that is the key term in the federal statute. So by making this change, the council is making this ordinance more in compliance, or, or rather more in compliance, I'll say, not non-compliant with the federal statute. We have an ordinance now that is not compliant with a federal statute. It is a subject, um, that has been raised in a lawsuit against the city, and the city's outside counsel defending that lawsuit has recommended that this change be made to our ordinance. So that is why we're here tonight. I appreciate Ms. Baker's explanation, and I appreciate Ms. Baker's leadership and her vote on the zoning commission on this item.
I'd like to vote, a motion to go ahead and, um, accept this, uh...
Ms. Winger.
You, you just brought something up that you forgot about. So we were discussing the removal of private country club?
Yes, I, I forgot about that. Thank you very much, Ms. Winger.
So the reference to private country clubs is in section 1A3, where it says, and I'll skip the non-relevant part. A says, "All districts, in any district, the following uses may be requested for designation as special uses." And item three says, "Private country club."
Right.
Um, and, Mr. Sanderson, um, if your interest is in, or Ms. Winger, if your interest is in deleting that set, that, that use, then my recommendation would be to make a motion to adopt this ordinance with the additional deletion of the reference to private country clubs in section 1, part C. And we will then, if it, if that motion is then made, it would be a motion to amend, um, the proposed ordinance. Then after that motion is acted on, if it's passed, then the council could make a motion to adopt the ordinance as amended. So it is a fix you all can make this evening.
I'd like to make a motion to that effect to, uh, actually make that amendment to remove private, private country club from that particular section.
Second.
We have a first and a second on the amendment. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Okay. Amendment passes four to one. Now we're back to the original motion.
As amended, Mayor.
As amended.
I'd move the, uh, motion as amended.
Thank you.
Second.
Second. Uh, Ms. Winger, all in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, counsel. Okay, item number 16, public hearing on the proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance in chapter 50 of the government, of the Code of Ordinances. It is 10:35. We're going to open the public hearing. It is 10:35. We're going to close the public hearing. Item number 17, discussion of possible action, ordinance number 20, 2020-03-10-B in regard to amendments in various sections of the city zoning ordinance and providing a penalty for violations of the city zoning ordinance by a fine in accordance with section 1-17 of chapter 1 of the Code of Ordinances or by court action to prevent, restrain, correct, or abate violations with each day an offense occurs being a separate violation. Mr. Rappley?
Mayor, uh, Mr. Snoll and I have prepared a pretty extensive, uh, presentation. I wanted to find out from counsel if you wanted to continue tonight or, or take this up at another meeting, uh, due to the time.
Pretty long.
Can you define extensive?
We've put together a PowerPoint, probably 16, 17 slides. We've kind of categorized all of chapter 50 and broken it down. But I just wanted to provide counsel that opportunity.
Do you want to move it to the next special meeting?
I'll, I'll defer to my colleagues.
Is there some reason that there's something in here that needs to be passed tonight per Mr. Denton?
Mr. Who?
Mr. Denton.
No, Ms. Winger, the, the action you all just took is the item that Mr. Denton was most concerned about. As Mr. Rappley said, there, there's a, a 17-slide PowerPoint. What the PowerPoint does is it, it hits the highlights of the material changes as Mr. Rappley and Mr. Zamarone have, um, have gone through the red line of the draft ordinance. And then I believe Mr. Rappley circulated to the governing body a memorandum that I prepared that lists the changes that I made to the prior draft that incorporates the, and is based upon the comments that we heard at four prior public hearings before the governing body on the zoning ordinance. You know, I, I don't know how long it will take Mr. Rappley to go through his PowerPoint, but I don't think I need to go through my memo except as to any questions that members of the governing body might have. This is the fifth meeting where this ordinance is before the council, December, January, two in February, and now a fifth meeting in March.
Thank you, Mr. Snoll.
Is there a way that you could go ahead and describe perhaps the differences? And only the differences as opposed to the, or is the, is the 17-slide presentation just those differences?
It's basically the staff's summary of the, of the various changes. The, the most detail, I think, that they've provided are about the, the two major sections that the zoning commission spent the longest amount of time on. Well, two of the three, the three that the zoning, the three where there are the most changes are in regard to, um, a new provision about planned unit developments, or PUDs. That language was crafted based upon the language used by the city of Chavino Park, which shortly before the zoning review committee did its work, had updated its, um, PUD ordinance. And I'm friends with the mayor of Chavino Park, who, um, shared some of their thoughts with me as well. And the other two sections where there were changes made after extensive work by our zoning commission were on home occupations and on short-term rentals. Home occupations was beefed up, changed pretty dramatically. And short-term rentals is new language in regard to keeping up with, uh, trends and dealing with the fact that, um, at the, at the time we started this process, the city had a, a situation in, in one neighborhood where there was a short-term rental, which was really abusing all the rules and causing a huge disruption in a neighborhood. After a series of work by the city manager and staff, that problem was solved. And we adopted a much stronger nuisance ordinance that puts a great deal of pressure on a non-compliant property owner whose, um, use of their property, even for a single-family residence, could lead to, um, stronger sanctions. Those are the high points of what the, uh, the changes are. There are a few other changes that are potentially significant. One change based upon, which is repeatedly made, is based upon a comment that former councilman McCormick made at several public hearings in regard to the city council being potentially hamstrung by a zoning commission that refuses to act.
The zoning commission would work.
And a review of the state statute that's relevant to this indicates that the city's current ordinance is different from the state statute. And so that some of the changes here, based on comments made by Mr. McCormick and, um, and, and comments endorsed, um, by Mr. Lowell's office, are to bring our ordinance in direct compliance with section 211.007 of the Local Government Code. I, I, I know it's late, and if, if you all want to, you know, move this to the, to the April agenda, you know, obviously that's within your discretion.
Counsel, I just want to mention that we are going to meet again, um, as we discussed earlier. So in order to prevent another marathon meeting, we could do this in the, in between the next regular scheduled meeting.
So I guess I could go ahead and move to, uh, go ahead and, uh, table this to the ele- next regular scheduled meeting, then?
Well, the thing, the trouble with this, doing this at a special meeting is that you have to be sure that you have four votes. Not just four present, but four votes. So everybody would have to agree on everything.
Mr. Snoll, can you clarify that?
Yes, sir. Um, the quorum for the special meeting is four, but the vote could still be a, a majority of the governing body, which is three votes.
Oh, really?
But you need a quorum of four
Oh, okay.
to adopt, to, to meet in a special meeting. There are certain things that do require a supermajority vote, but acting on this amend, this set of amendments to the zoning ordinance can be adopted by, uh, three votes of the governing body, whether it's at a regular meeting or a special meeting.
Mr. May?
I do have a clarification. I'm not going to be able to participate in the vote on this ordinance if it's considered together, because I am an o- owner of a short-term rental. So I will be absent. Is that going to affect the viability of an actual vote?
You're going to stand down.
I'll be, I-
Stand down. You won't be absent, but you'll stand down.
I'll be temporarily absent, because I won't be in here.
Well, Mr. May, I, I recommend that you all look at, that you look at chapter 171 of the Local Government Code to determine whether your ownership of a short-term rental would invoke the obligation on your part to not only step aside, but to actually abstain from voting and discussion on the item by filing an affidavit with the city prior to the consideration of the item. The standard in chapter 171 is not an automatic standard, and, and I commend that, that statute to your attention. But if you are unable to be here for whatever reason, then it does put a little more pressure on the city council to have the quorum of four. Requires the other four, you know, elected members of the governing body to be present.
Or we can simply take that section out, if that's the case.
Well, it, it's a, it's, it's a big change- Well, it, it's a, it's, it's a big change. It's an important change, because if, if the will of the council is to permit short-term rentals, then they should be regulated in one way or another. Right now, it's the Wild West on that, in Castle Hills. We don't have an ordinance. San Antonio has a very complex ordinance. Our ordinance is framed primarily by work by Mr. Rappley, with a few members of the zoning commission, that is more tailored to a community of our size and our type. So it's really an integral part of the new ordinance. Although, Ms. Winger, you're right. We could, the council could decide to adopt the amended ordinance, other than that division, because it's in its own separate division of the code. Or it could be on the agenda for the next regular meeting, at which point the quorum requirement is three, and Mr. May's absence or nonparticipation would, would not impede action by the governing body.
Thank you, Mr. Schnall. Do we have a motion, counsel?
Mayor, I'd, I'd move that we table this item until the special meeting scheduled for late this month or early April, if the date to be determined.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand.
Second.
Second by Ms. Winger. Any further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Nice and cohesive, counsel. Okay, we did number eighteen. And lastly, number nineteen, discussion of possible action concerning Wayside Chapel and Evangelical Free Church versus City of Castle Hills at all.
We already dealt with that.
Okay.
We did it. We moved it up.
All right. No further action. Any announcements by council members? Mr. Isbrand? Mr. Sanderson?
None at this time.
Mr. May?
Not at this time.
Ms. Winger?
Well, I do have one, but I meant to do it at the beginning of the meeting, and I was late, so I'm going to reserve it for the next time.
Perfect. Mr. Gregory?
I just heard of an announcement, for those who are watching. I wanted to be in the record. The death of a former council member and my bridge partner of 25 years, Joanne Bersinger. She died of a massive stroke the day before Valentine's Day. She will be missed.
Thank you, Mr. Gregory. Last but not least, we've been working with the, the city of San Antonio and the metro health district to get information on any policies that we need to do. We've increased the cleaning schedule here at the city, just to make sure that we're not a breeding ground for any germs, despite of what's going on with the coronavirus. So rest assured that we're doing everything that we can to make your city safe, productive, and, most importantly, clean. Mr. Rappley?
And we've also ordered wall mount hand sanitizers. It'll be installed here in the chambers and other areas of the building as well, soon as they get here.
Thank you so much, Mr. Rappley. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion?
No mode.
All in favor?